Okay, clock on the wall says four o'clock, so we'll get underway here. And at this time, we'll call to order the December 14th, 2015 meeting of the Salina City Commission to Order. And we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I just ask that all who are able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, and the visible, liberated, and justice
Okay, we do not have any awards and proclamations, but I would like to just take the opportunity at this time to offer a congratulatory note to some police department promotions that took place this afternoon, the Deputy Chief Morton here. And we now have a new captain, Paul Forrester, and three new sergeants, Mike Miller, Scott Hoagland, and Sarah Cox. And so, we wish them all the best, we thank them for their service, and look forward to their new roles in the leadership at the police department. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, Citizens Forum.
Probably carry him. Citizens Forum, huh?
Okay, this is just an opportunity for any citizen to speak regarding any item that is not on today's agenda. And we just ask that you please give your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I'm not sure if this is the proper place to bring this up, but I didn't see any other place to do it. And it's actually based on a memorandum the city provided at the beginning of this agenda. And I had a quick question about, I think Daniel Stack, the engineer, I don't think he's here. Yeah, he is. Okay, thank you. He wrote a memorandum about this river issue as far as cleaning up the, you know, the area. And on the second paragraph of this memorandum, it had an estimated cost to stabilize the embankment was just over a million dollars. And the city's share for this 300 would be 335,000. And I believe that the other share would be the Corps of Engineers, I think if that's correct, yes?
That would be correct. Would have been correct.
That's what it says, though.
Right, right.
Okay, it said the city had not budgeted for such an expenditure, and the project was put on hold until while the city developed a plan to set aside the sufficient funds to cover these costs. And I would like to ask the question, has the city developed a plan to set aside these costs? Or when is the anticipation of that occurring?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're just general information about where this money's coming from.
Well, if you'll allow me to fill in the blank there, if you read through the entire memo, you'll get to the point where that was under a specific cost share under a particular program. However, that was in 2007, in 2012, I believe it was, or 13, there was another flood event which occurred that staff was able to find another section of code that basically said if the Corps of Engineer participated in the construction of that, that they would pay for 100% of the cost. So...
Where does it say that?
I'll just finish. That project has been completed, it was completed in September, and the cost, the complete cost of that project was paid for by the Corps of Engineers at 1.2 million. So, I'm glad you brought that up because good work by staff and everything else saved the city at least $335,000. And it's completed, it's all contained in that memo, just if you continue reading through...
So, you have to go back and look at the whole picture rather than just...
No, you just have to read the entire memo.
Well, I just came up on a point where I wondered where the money came from, and...
It was paid for, but it was Corps of Engineers paid for the entire...
How did the, how did city staff convince the Corps of Engineers to pay for the whole thing?
We have great staff. I mean, they really know their stuff.
Well, that's a pretty good question. I'd like to know.
Well, I think that, as I said in reading through the memo, I think you'll find that they were able to find a part of the, of the code with the, I think he calls it here, 33 USC 701N, which said that the Corps of Engineers, by participating in this, would therefore bear the entire cost of that should any maintenance need to be done down the road. So, unless I've got, staff wants to correct me and I'm wrong on that, that's what I...
No, that's correct, and that, you're correct, in that the 100% of the cost was paid for by the Corps after both parties got together. The Corps further evaluated both project scopes and determined under that PL-84-00, which is pursuant to 33 USC 701N, federal code, that they could fund it, and therefore they did choose to fund it.
Right.
So, basically, that's a federal law that you're quoting in this memorandum, and...
Yeah, it's authorization for things that the Corps of Engineers can actually fund, the type of projects they can fund. And because of this type of project, they did, when they finished their review, and they determined that based on that, they could include both of the projects mentioned in here under their full funding. And so, we're very happy about that.
So, the question for me still remains is, how did our city staff convince the Corps of Engineers to do that? Because if you've ever had anything to do with the Corps of Engineers, they're an impossible group to work with on certain issues.
Well, and I would say from, again, you're like most of the federal agencies, departments, and so forth, they, some of them have different emphasis. And of course, this is a flood control project, and the Corps of Engineers is, they're an expert really in flood control type projects. So, this is part of their main reason for being, actually. And so, I can just tell you, I'm sure that what they did is, is we brought them to town, they looked at the project thoroughly, and they just reviewed the project scope, scale, cause, and so forth, in accordance with their enabling legislation that allows them to fund these projects, probably looked to determine if they had funds available, determined that they did, or when they first looked at it for the year that we just finished it and then programmed it. So, they're, quite honestly, with regards to flood control projects, we've always had very good luck working with the Corps of Engineers.
Well, that's great. And of course, another question that arises, is the river in danger of flooding? And since we have a dike built around the city?
No, we recently received from the FEMA review or certification for protecting the community against a 100-year flood event, which is what we've been looking for the last couple of years. And that's a result of a remapping initiative by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. So, and we know that since our flood was built in the early 60s, that it's withstood quite a few flood events, and appears to be functioning properly.
I was in a meeting previously about FEMA, and from what I've learned previously, that FEMA is not a federal agency. Is that true?
It's a federal agency.
Okay, we're, is, first of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing that up, because I actually was thinking of a way to bring that up as well. So, I appreciate that, and your five minutes are up. So, if anyone else has anything on the Citizens Forum, we'll get the meeting rolling along.
Well, possibly, we'll bring some more information about FEMA to the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just want to highlight to staff that appreciated getting that memorandum. It's always good to see those, and certainly appreciate the Corps of Engineers stepping up and fulfilling that responsibility as well. Okay, looks like we have no other Citizens Forum at this time, and we have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move into the consent agenda at this time.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 7th, 2015. Item 6.2, adopt resolution number 15-7308, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Salina and Meis, Hauser &amp; Company Certified Public Accountants for an audit of city records for the year ending December 31st, 2015. Item 6.3, accept and authorize the 2016 vehicles and equipment, sub-CIP, authorizing staff to implement the plans and solicit bids and proposals as required by city policy. Item 6.4, approve resolution number 15-7307, appointing members to various boards and commissions. And item 6.5, acceptance of a public utility easement dedication from Casey's General Stores.
Okay, are there any items that any commissioner would like to have removed or amended on today's consent agenda?
I'd like to remove item number 6.3 from the consent agenda.
Okay, but remove item 6.3? Are there any others?
I move we approve items 6.1, 6.2, 6.4, and 6.5.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve items 6.1, 6.2, 6.4, and 6.5. A motion and a second for those. And is there any further discussion at this time? I would actually like to make a comment prior to the vote here, and that is in regard to the appointments on our Economic Development Organization Board. And I'd just like to highlight that because it has been a big, there has been a lot of work leading up to this and a lot of work left. But the three representatives for the city are Reverend Allen Smith, Dr. Paula Freed, and Rachel Storer. And I think the three of them bring a diverse set of skills to this organization that I think will really benefit the organization. Reverend Smith has, I believe, 12 years of experience, in addition to being a pastor, 12 years of experience in sales and marketing with Chevron Corporation. Dr. Freed has been in the community for probably 35 years, involved in arts and social causes. And I think brings a great deal of experience to the table there. And Rachel Storer is, I think she grew up in the community, but has a degree in, an MBA, and a degree in management, and also has lived in other communities prior to moving back to Salina. And I think offers a youthful perspective on the board as well. So, I just wanted to say that I think that the city will be well represented in this board. And I know Vice Mayor Crawford, and in particular, was really wanting to see a lot of diversity on this board, and I think that we certainly achieved that. So, having said that, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda 6.1, 6.2, 6.4, and 6.5? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries 5-0, and we'll hear item 6.3. Do you need staff report from...
No, I don't. I had a question, I think Mr. Stack would probably be the appropriate person for that.
Okay.
So, easement, easement for Casey's, is that what this is?
This is related to the purchase of a wide crack patching machine.
Oh, 6.5?
Oh, wide crack, okay.
6.3, okay.
Yeah, 6.3.
Sorry about that.
All right. And you mentioned there, the purchase price of the machine is $70,000, and you mentioned that at a programmed use of 12 weeks per year, the break even is about six years. I was just curious what the expected life of the machine would be.
Rod and Jim put this together, trying to pull it out of it, I apologize. I know, I know wide crack seal is a big deal here, but as far as the machine goes, I'll let them explain.
Okay.
Trying to see if I had that written down somewhere. We, since we've never had that particular type of machine, it's a little difficult to say, but the existing machine, I believe, was purchased like 12 years ago, 15 years ago. So, the lifetime's quite extensive. They get used, you know, like I said, 12, 15 weeks a year, full-time, and, you know, they're all taken care of. So, we expect the life to substantially exceed the payback period in this case.
Okay, I was just, sometimes this type of machine, I would think would get, because of the types of materials it works with, would age faster perhaps than, say, a backhoe or something like that. But that's, that was my question.
Yeah, okay, it says here, the existing crack sealing machine is a 2003 unit, in fair to good condition. So, it is now 13 years old.
Okay.
And is still not totally worn out, but we do intend to sell it to try to recover some costs or trade it for the newer machine. The wide crack sealing machine, if we need to use conventional crack sealing, will handle that, but it also does the wide crack sealing. The existing unit we have does not do wide crack machine, we have to contract that. So, the idea is it'd be a more flexible machine, and we could put it to use.
Yeah, well, and also, we're limited to the time, the time used on that thing, so if we happen to get, out of those six weeks, a couple of weeks of bad weather, we're kind of behind on that, too, so.
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of running and scheduling the machine.
Right, scheduling probably is quite, quite good, too. Hopefully, we don't get a whole lot more big cracks, but if we do, that'll pay for itself faster, so.
That's it. Thank you.
One question in addition.
Question?
Regarding police vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
I guess you're it, or both of you. Well, actually, I probably do need police prep.
I'm pleased to yield the floor.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
And congratulations. And my question has nothing to do with the actual expenditure itself. But, and I don't know if anyone else has received comments about this, but are these four vehicles going to be all black?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. When I first saw the first all-black one, I thought it was really a cool-looking car. I mean, our problem is, they fit in to the background very easily, which sometimes is nice, but except when you're looking for a police car, they're hard to find.
Yes, sir.
And with the low-profile lights on the top, they're either harder to find. Of course, if you're chasing a bad guy, I guess that's good. But those times when you're looking for a police car, it's, it's hard to find them. And with the black tent and the black vehicle, they just look kind of like a military, almost, all due respect to our Russian friends, like a KGB vehicle, coming down, down the street. And I don't see this as being a very inviting vehicle to, you know, get youth to feel comfortable being around police officers. And I don't know what other color schemes are available, or if you've received any other comments. This is just a comment from one, I haven't really discussed it with the other commissioners, but it just seems to be a, kind of an intimidating, which again, if you're Chicago Police, that's probably what they want, except their cars are white and blue, but, but it's, have you received any other comments about the color scheme?
We've had a couple other comments.
Pardon me?
How about purple? I, Wildcat looks...
We have received a couple, not very many. Our intent, of course, is not to be intimidating. Black and white, I've worked at the Salina Police Department for 24 years, and that has been the cars we've had. Granted, this, this vehicle, when we switched to the Ford Explorer platform, and we were looking at that, we were trying to balance several different things, and that being, when we were purchasing Crown Vics, we were purchasing them white and painting the fronts and backs black to make a black and white car. That cuts down a little bit on the trade-in value. I'm not sure how much, but it is a consideration, because whoever purchased it has to paint it. So, we decided that we wanted to go with a solid color vehicle. The markings on the car are vinyl, so they can be taken off fairly easily. But we also wanted to, you know, have a black and white appearance, because that's what we've had traditionally here in Salina. And black and white is very recognizable as a police car. So, we wanted to make the letters as big as we could on the vehicle, and they are white for that purpose. Also, as far as a black and white vehicle, as far as police are concerned, it's, it is a, we want to have a show of authority, of course. When, when I was the late-night shift watch commander and was working with a group of guys, and, and we would have problems with bars and stuff and fights in the parking lot, we wanted to tip the scales in our advantage, of course. And when we showed up, you know, the police are here, the authorities are here, we want to take control of the situation. Same thing applies when, when I'm on a traffic, or one of our, not me personally, I haven't been working on a traffic stop in quite some time, but when they're out on the street by themselves, working a DUI at 3:00 in the morning, you know, uniform, police car, show of authority, that, you know, try to tip the scales in our favor. Once again, it was, it's not our intent to be uninviting. We've had a lot of comments as well with regards to the same thing you observed, with it being a nice-looking vehicle, as far as our new design. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it just, I just happened to be standing in front of the hospital the other afternoon, and, and one of the officers came by, and, and I really couldn't tell who was inside. Again, you know, if you're doing covert operations, of course, you have unmarked cars, I'm assuming for that purpose, but, but it's like, wow, it'd be nice to see his face.
One of the, one of the, yes. And one of the things that we've also done is that on our Crown Vics, the tent on both the rear passenger doors and the front passenger doors were the same, and we've since changed that to where the, and I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but the front doors are now a lighter color, because we do want, if I'm waving or, you know, to somebody, we want folks to be able to see that. A couple other points that I didn't make about, about the vehicle is, uniformity is very important as far as our vehicles all looking the same. It's the same with the police uniform, we want it to be immediately identifiable. It also plays a role in, we may only have a certain number of vehicles on the street, and you may see the same vehicle and the same officer coming by you three different times, and you're thinking, well, how many officers do they have out? Because it's hard to distinguish, you know, if we have one that's this color, one that's that's color. So, for municipal police agencies, it's very important to have a consistent-looking fleet. Not all of ours are like that now, because we're still in the transition of trying to get out of the Crown Vics, but we're getting closer each year with doing that.
Maybe put a little pink "We heart you" on the side or something, just make it a little more, but it wasn't a deal breaker, and it had nothing to do with the need for the vehicles, but just notice that. And again, there are times when you want your police force to be intimidating, but other times, when you want, you know, community policing and assistance.
Sure.
You want to...
One other point I might make on that.
Be friendly appearing.
Right. One other point I might make on that is, if we go to a call and we're talking with somebody that is a victim in the case, of course, the vehicle is the show of authority that when we get there. And when we're dealing with a victim on a case or a witness, the officer that's making contact is the ambassador, and the one that we need to be, you know, having a friendly demeanor and showing good customer service. So, the vehicle's one thing, but our officers also need to be the ambassador in, in that respect as well, the personal contact.
Good point, well made. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And I'll just add, too, that I mean, the resource officers at this school are approachable. And I will note that the bicycle officers do wear yellow. So, good luck.
All right, thank you. I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay. Bright yellow. Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, name and address, and...
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Since any one of the commissioners can challenge a consent agenda item to remove it, and today you removed 6.3, my question is, can the public amend the consent agenda themselves when it comes up as an agenda item?
I will ask our city attorney his professional advice on that. Do you have any other questions beyond that?
I don't think so, not on this item.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, then, and we'll go ahead and have him answer that question for you, but thanks.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think, Mr. Ruska, I think that, that would be at the commission's discretion. In a nutshell, the general rules relating to agendas, you don't have to have an agenda. If you do have an agenda, you are to, the Attorney General tells us that you are to include anything on that agenda that you anticipate taking up. So, as staff prepares the agenda, as you know, that consent agenda is designed to expedite matters that, in staff's expectation, might not warrant discussion. Whether it warrants discussion or not is obviously up to the, to the commissioners, and that's what prompts the ability of any one of you to ask that the item not be included among the consent agenda motion. Taking that one step further, I think it is your prerogative to allow others than yourselves to make a similar request. I would expect it is extraordinary. City manager or Deputy City Manager might know better than I from even practices in other communities, but it would seem extraordinary.
Yeah, I would agree, the authority behind what you do with the agenda lies with the governing body, not with the public.
Correct.
So, absolutely.
Okay, and, all right, so, thank you, Mr. Ruska.
One quick question, can I follow up with that, please?
Well, just one last one, in the future, if you would just kind of ask them all at once, and then we can answer them all.
Sure.
Okay, appreciate that.
The first item on, on the consent agenda is approve the minutes. And if the public happens to see there's an error in the minutes, they have no way to address that issue and correct it. It's only whether or not the commissioners read it and find an error. And sometimes you can't edit your own stuff. And that's the point. And I think it should be allowed, if there's anyone that wants to challenge or amend, should be given that right. And like Mr. Bankston said, whether it's, if you create an agenda, it should be followed. And consent agenda is part of the agenda. So, that's my point.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mayor, real quick, the, the public does have the opportunity to question the minutes. The minutes are with the packet that go out typically on a Thursday, and so they have, for example, Friday, they could come in today, all they have to do is bring it to the attention of the city clerk or city manager's office, and it doesn't happen very often, but I think it has happened in the past, that someone said, hey, I think that was wrong, or that name was misspelled, or something like that. And obviously, we want to make sure the minutes are accurate before they are adopted by you, so we're very open to that, and we'd encourage anyone to bring that to our attention.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you for your commentary.
And Ray, you could call, I think, I know you could call me anytime, Ray.
And Ray, you could call, uh, I think, I know you could call me anytime, or any of the other commissioners, and bring it to our attention so that we'll, I mean, we read the minutes, but we might overlook something and you could always do that, too.
I personally believe that the best time to do it is in open meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for your...
Can actually participate.
Okay.
Otherwise, is I have to chase each one of these commissioners down.
Well, I think we've explained, I think we've explained this and, and, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's understandable. I mean, obviously, we, we, uh, have been elected to do certain items and make certain decisions and, and kind of what goes on the consent agenda and things on the minutes are, are generally the easy ones, but as the Vice Mayor said, you know, we certainly appreciate any input that you may have prior to the meeting and, and that way we can, uh, move on with it at the time, so. Appreciate that, and so we'll go ahead and, is there any other public comment on this?
Will you consider amending by the public?
No, uh, not, not at this time. No, not at this time. And, and, and once again, thank you, and your three minutes are up. And I'll just, uh, add one quick question to staff on, in regard to, uh, public comment. And, uh, you know, it is the position, I think, of, of pass boards in this board that, uh, we, we get more public comment rather than less, and I think that, uh, our consent agenda fully usually expresses the, the concern that, uh, things that tend to be a little more controversial or, or have any, uh, necessary discussion attached to them generally do not make it on the consent agenda. As far as what, uh, state requirements or statutes that, um, where we do absolutely require the public's ability to comment, what, what would those be? How broad would those interpretations be and, eh, in what cases, uh, would those be absolute?
Are, are you asking basically what type of actions would the state require a public hearing?
Well, right, public comment. I mean, part of the, I, I think there's a misconception there that somehow we are doing something wrong by not having public comment during a particular portion, but it's, it's really, we tend to provide that public comment out of an abundance of participation versus not allowing people to participate. So I'm just saying, what are the, what are the requirements for saying you need to get participation?
Typically, planning-type items statutorily are required to have public hearing. Uh, and there are a few, just a handful of other type things that, uh, they may require that. Sometimes a grant may require public input, uh, in that way, in a, in a formal way, but generally, I would say probably outside of the land use items, I'm gonna guess ninety-five plus percent of the items you address, there's no requirement or, uh, well whatsoever by state law for, uh, uh, public input. So that's a privilege that the, each governing body of each city, and for that matter, each county, and the state, uh, grants the public if they should choose to do that. The privilege, or the entitlement is really for the ability to attend the open meeting. The privilege is the, is the input unless there is a special provision for, uh, public hearing.
All right. And I make that point just to say that we're interested more in more information coming out than less. So anytime something comes up that a charge is made that we somehow want to quell discussion, I just, uh, like to dispel that, uh, thought, uh, right away, so. Anyway.
Mayor, it might be of interest as well that that distinction becomes, uh, quite evident in that anytime we're dealing with a matter that is statutorily required, as you may have noted, that is scheduled at four P M. And those are the first items on the agenda so that any public wishing to participate can know as closely as possible as to when they would be heard.
And that would be, that would be our section five, public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Those are the statutorily required public hearings.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, bring it back up, uh, for action on this item, six point three.
A move that we accept and authorize the twenty sixteen Vehicles and Equipment Sub C I P, authorizing staff to implement the plans and solicit bids and proposals as required by city policy.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second to accept and authorize the two thousand sixteen, uh, Vehicles and Equipment Sub C I P and authorize staff to implement the plans and solicit bids and proposals as required by city policy. Any further discussion at this time, seeing none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries five zero. We'll move into the administration.
Item seven point one, first reading ordinance number one five dash one zero eight one five, levying Salina Business Improvement District number one service fees for two thousand sixteen in accordance with K S A twelve dash one seven nine.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, we'll get a staff report on this from Mr. France.
Mayor and Commissioners, Kansas State Law provides procedure for creation and financing of one or more business improvement districts, um, within cities for the purpose of providing administration and financing of additional and extended services to businesses within such districts. These services are intended to restore, uh, or promote the economic vitality of the district and general welfare of the city. Financing of the B I D is through service fees applicable to all businesses within the district. Uh, in nineteen eighty-three, the city commission approved the creation of B I D number one, covering certain downtown areas of Salina along with associated service fees. Concept of self-government for downtown has continued, uh, since that time. Uh, cities may provide B I D services directly through city employees or by contract with a not-for-profit corporation. From nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-seven, the city directed the B I D programs and since nineteen eighty-seven, uh, that's been delegated to Salina Downtown, Inc., uh, a not-for-profit, um, agency. State law provides for each B I D to have a city-appointed board of advisors who may also serve as the board for the not-for-profit corporation. In Salina, the B I D and S D I boards are made up of the same individuals serving a dual role. S D I provides for annual elections to the board and the city commission has chosen to use those B I D results in its B I D appointment process uh, to help assure that the board of advisors is made up of a broad base of persons representing downtown businesses. The B I D's program of services is financed through a service fee on businesses. It's important to note that B I Ds cannot be levied on buildings, owners, or properties. These annual service fees are mandatory payments established by city ordinance as a city of Salina fee is billed and collected by the city's finance department with the assistance of B I D staff. Uh, preliminary S D I two thousand sixteen budget was timely presented to the city and considered as a part of the city's annual budget process. Uh, the B I D S D I board recommended a two and one-half percent increase from two thousand fifteen fees. Their budget delineates projected expenditures for downtown service operations as well as business support and recruitment, communications, advocacy, destination marketing, with oversight by committees comprised of downtown business representatives. The budget as requested included eighty-seven thousand dollars in fee revenues, an operating supplement of fifty thousand dollars, as well as a facade grant allowance of fifty thousand dollars. Ordinance number fifteen ten thousand eight fifteen incorporates that direction, providing a two and one-half percent in general fee increase over two thousand fifteen. Fee schedule is recommended, should provide fee stability, uh, in the eighty-six to eighty-eight thousand dollar range. Of course, that varies a little bit depending on, um, vacancies and turnovers and so on in the district. Uh, at this point, I think, um, I'd stand for questions or other staff may be available to answer them if I cannot.
Okay, questions for staff this time?
Yes, I'm sure that, I have a feeling the answer is in here and I've looked at it before and I, I don't think I'm reading fast enough to find. Are businesses on the streets perpendicular to Santa Fe that are not otherwise directly in these other districts included? Or is it just the Santa Fe address?
The, uh, those businesses that are required to pay under state law include all businesses within the entire Business Improvement District. There is a difference in how the fees are allocated. If you are on Santa Fe, uh, between certain blocks, I can't remember the north and south boundaries now, but, um, and you're, uh, at gray, at the, the grade level, the main level, um, and you're, you're charged based on a, a dollar per lineal foot of front footage. Outside of that, most everyone else is charged, they're called the employment district. Outside of that, they're charged based on the number of employees. And then there's a little mill district thing, but most of them, most everyone falls into either the Santa Fe District, front footage, uh, uh, portion of charging, or the, uh, Employment District approach.
The Santa Fe District runs from Ash to bolt Mulberry Street, just so you know.
But how far east-west does it run?
Well, let's see, the, I don't know if there's a map.
It is, it is for those ground floor businesses that are addressed on Santa Fe, so it's just the businesses facing Santa Fe.
Do you mean the entire district?
Or do you mean the Santa Fe District?
The district.
The, the Santa Fe District is just those on Santa Fe. The rest of the district would include, for the most part, the employment, what we call the Employment District folks. That takes up the rest of the Business Improvement District. I don't know if there's a map attached here for the Business Improvement District.
Well, it says businesses between Ash and South, but it doesn't say how far east and west.
Yeah, it actually goes to...
I, I could see a, a building being, you know, twenty-five feet east or west of Santa Fe directly, you know, affecting the appearance of...
Would, would it be helpful if we brought Matt back with a second reading? Can we do that?
It would, because it, it, yeah, it, it goes beyond Santa Fe, so you're talking Seventh Street and, and over to Fourth and, it's, uh...
Middle Eighth Street and the middle of...
The southern boundary is Prescott, the northern boundary is Elm, the east boundary is Fourth Street, the west boundary is Eighth Street. But it's not completely rectangular, there are, there are jogs down by the hospital.
Does, does that east-west, I'm just asking out of ignorance here, does the east-west boundary need to be incorporated in this description of the districts?
Which description are you referring to?
Well, uh, section two.
Section two, where it describes the fees. It, it describes the delimeters of each of the districts.
Correct.
But it doesn't reference the east-west boundaries. But it's on Santa Fe and the other districts are described by north-south delimeters, but they would be the full width of the district, except for the ones on Santa Fe.
And the fourth dates sounded probably what I assumed it probably was, but it, I just didn't see it written anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the descriptions are, are adequate for this purpose.
Are, are you referring to the Santa Fe District table?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
Because it's, it's listed in the, um, in the frontage, it's based on the frontage on...
Right, but they're buildings in the businesses in the, the, uh, Business Improvement District that are not fronting on Santa Fe?
Right. In, in the entire B I D, this is just sub-district. Hospital District and, and, uh, downtown district are separate.
Right, so these are these three sep... So this is only addressing those three sub-districts?
Yeah, the, the point of this is not to reestablish the overall district boundaries. So when you see the descriptions for each of those, uh, uh, payment allocation districts, for example, the, the Employment District says all businesses located between Ash Street and South Street, not included within the Santa Fe District. And you're thinking east and west would go to the extent of the overall boundary of the district. And that's what, that's what would be inferred there, and that would be accurate.
So this is addressing just these three districts in section two?
That is the full, full B I D.
Yeah.
Is those three districts comprise the full Business Improvement District.
They're called districts because they each have a different payment methodology, so that's why they're called that. But together, uh, they make up the entire Business Improvement District. Might be helpful, we'll make a note that, uh, maybe next time to go ahead and throw the B I D, the overall map, and then that, that, that graphic will help, help you, uh, meld that, uh, description a little bit better and understand where, where it's at. But, uh, in this case, again, uh, the Santa Fe is pretty straightforward because, uh, the front footage abutting Santa Fe between Ash Street and Mulberry, well, that's pretty easy to understand. And then the all businesses located between Ash Street and South Street, not included within the Santa Fe, east and west, you'd take that to be to the very extreme of the entire B I D district. All businesses in there with those north-south boundaries. And then down in the Mill District, it's very clear again between Elm Street and Ash Street and between South Street and Prescott Street. But if you took all those ag- in aggregate, you'd probably have a bit of a rectangle, but if you apply them within the actual map, you'll know you don't have a perfect rectangle, but they all fit in.
This document assumes that the geographical boundaries of the B I D district are established someplace else.
In fact, I think that reference is found in the second whereas, where it says it's necessary for the governing body to levy the fees applicable to the businesses located within the B I D is established by ordinance number eighty-three eighty-nine seventy-one. So it's presuming that original B I D boundary and then these fees are applicable within that boundary.
I knew it had to be there somewhere.
Yeah, the only, the only reason you would have to actually reestablish the entire B I D is if it dissolved by virtue of a petition or by your own action. Then, if we brought that back, you would be establishing the entire district in addition to the fees. But in this case, the district still stands as it did then. Don't believe it's been modified or we'd see a different ordinance, uh, number since then.
Okay. Thank you.
Nice.
Dean had it right.
There you go. Thank you.
Technology is wonderful. Okay, thank you.
That's exactly what you needed.
Right.
Wow. I have a, uh, just a question about just the procedure, uh, of this and, and it has to do with, um, in the, in the report, it's, it mentions that the two thousand S D, two thousand sixteen S D I budget was timely presented and that their, and that it was recommended by their board. Do you know when the, uh, uh, approximate date of the, their board's action? And then also what their, the bu- when, when the budget was submitted?
It probably was towards the end of May, I would guess.
Okay.
That's typically when we get it. Sometimes they run over a little bit if their board is involved in discussions, you know, it might, just like any other thing, take a little bit more time, but, but we got it before it was time for consideration in our budget process, so we were able to incorporate it in that.
Okay, and so, and the S D I board then would have had, would have seen this prior to that, and would I be right in assuming that they had a public process where they took a vote and...
Yes, they would have, in an open meeting, they would officially vote on their budget and on their recommendation regarding the fees.
Okay, and then all the, all the, everybody that's responsible for paying these fees would have been noticed to, of that action taking place?
No, they would have had notice regarding the meeting, so if they would, would desire to attend.
But I, I'm just saying, if, if anybody had a problem with it at the time,
Yes.
there was a, there was an avenue to address that at that time.
Yeah, because when we're talking about the B I D, because it's, it's a, it's a municipal entity, in essence, enabled by state law, an entity that you create with those other conditions, and so that is an, an open, uh, board. Uh, it's really a board, it's an open board, just like the, the city commission and other open boards we have that are subject to the Open Meetings Act, so they would have had the similar process.
And just in reading this, were there, were there any, did, did they forward any concerns that were expressed by any of the public at that time?
No, they, they didn't at that time that I recall, and I, I tried to attend those the best I can. I know recently they had a conversation on their actual, and they were off about seventy-five thousand, but what they'd forgotten to do, I think, is that, uh, in two thousand fourteen, the governing body, U D, provided, uh, funding for their facade grants. And as they entered two thousand fifteen, they, uh, had a surplus at the beginning of the year of eighty-some thousand dollars. And so they were, for fifteen, you didn't allocate because they had the surplus, you didn't need to. So they were spinning them down, but they forgot to show the balance in their budget number as they carry forward. So it looked like they had a deficit, when in fact, they didn't.
Okay. All right, yeah, I just wanted to...
I, I would add, as a part of your deliberations, this is a specific study session item that gets discussed every year.
Right.
Along with, um...
Right. Well, and, and I was just kind of establishing that there was, that, that anybody that had a grievance with it or whatever had an opportunity at, at their board meeting to, um, and in the subsequent eight months to, or seven, to do that, okay. And I just wanted to clarify, I do recall study session items on that as well. Okay, any further questions for staff at this time?
Um, I, I was just curious too, I know that there's, there's some relationship between the city and the budget for the, for Salina Downtown. And, um, I, what question was, was prompted by a request, oh, gosh, month, maybe two months ago, where, um, S D I requested to have, I think it was twelve thousand dollars perhaps that had been allocated for banners to be instead used for, uh, bike racks downtown. And so I, I was curious, is, is there a relationship between the city and S D I when, when it comes to something like, like that in terms of, say, well, you know, get park and rec involved and they probably have a pretty good handle on bike racks and that sort of thing?
Yeah, let me, I can give you a, a bigger picture. We see, we use, you... We see, we use, people use the letters SDI and also BID. Okay, BID is the Business Improvement District, that's what we're talking about today. And with a BID, you need to have a board. And so, probably thirty years ago or so, when this, well, I guess thirty-two years ago, when this thing was formed, or sometime fairly soon subsequent to that, there was a discussion that says, do we need a SDI-type organization, a nonprofit organization, and a BID? Their goal is sort of the same thing, from two different angles. And so somewhere along the line, there was a decision that the, the BID board members would be reflective of the SDI, which are done by a vote of members within the district. So in that case, you have the same people that can do both sides of, do both, and spend, really, the monies from both resources. And of course, the SD, the BID monies have to be spent in accordance to a state law, which is fairly broad in what they can do downtown. So you've got that relationship, so it basically creates a bond between the city and, and the SDI by virtue of the BID-SDI relationship. So as we fast forward in time, staff has always had a very, very close relationship. For example, way back as, when I was back as Assistant City Manager, I was a liaison to the board meetings. We've had other staff that step in as needed, whether it's Public Works or Parks and Rec or whomever that relates Police Department, that relates to issues they've had along the way. And so we always provide that staff support whenever it's requested and that they need to do that. So, so we really have always had a very, very close relationship. And I'll be there if there's questions about their budget or the, the amount of the fee or anything like that, and try to answer that. Or if I'm not there, try to get the question and answer that for them. So it's always been a close relationship. So when it comes to the question of the twelve thousand that you'd allocated for the brackets, they felt that it'd be probably better used, given the height of the lights, to be put towards bike racks, which could be used now and also could be used later in downtown project. And so that's why we brought that to you, to say, yeah, it's fine to use that, those grant dollars in that way. So there's a very close relationship, I think there always really has been, and I would expect there to continue to be in some form.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franz. Is there, do we have any public comment at this time?
Ray Ruska, two thirty-five North Santa Fe. Well, this conversation brought up a whole array of questions, some I never even knew before. And I'm not so sure I could actually ask you all the questions in advance. You know, and I would suggest that, this is the first I've ever heard of any public comment about these issues have to be asked in advance, you know, all the questions. That's very difficult unless you have recourse or rebuttal to some of the issues that bring up other questions. I just like to make that point. I want to thank the, uh, the city and, and the mayor for correcting the original ordinance number that was being used arraignment for over thirty years. And finally, I pointed it out, and they decided, well, maybe that's the original ordinance. And I think that everyone's probably aware of that. That was the first time I was ever right. Where it starts off with the first whereas, and it says the proposed budget for the calendar year two thousand sixteen will be submitted, since there's no director, who submitted this proposed budget? And from what I've just heard, that the SDI submitted it. They're a nonprofit organization the city's giving money to, twelve thousand dollars, I think Mr. Hardy just pointed that out. I'm a little concerned about that because the SDI is not an organization of the city. The BID is an organization of the city. Now, these, some of these issues are, yeah, I believe, I believe I might be correct in saying that the SDI existed before the BID. Probably be by a few, at least a few years and maybe longer. And then, another question I've got here is that, is the BID area the same proposed area as the new TIF and the STAR bonds? Are those exactly the same sizes or the same areas? I do know that the TIF and the STAR bonds are the same geographical area. That you, and then the BID uses this same financing method as the TIF and the STAR bonds. They're getting it from sales tax. So, um, and then finally, not finally, but then the SDI and the BID, BID consist of the same members. When was that actually done by some sort of resolution or saying, we're going to allow the SDI and the BID have the same members? I don't believe that says anywhere in any of previous ordinance that it does. I think we've got, and some of this, some of this stuff about the, the SDI existed while, before. And then one, one other question, you know, since we have two different entities here, what does SDI have to do with the BID other than make recommendations and using all the same board members? I pointed this out to Mr. Gage in the past about, that's a contradiction between a nonprofit organization and the city of Salina, uh, BID. And one other final thing that I, not final, but I would like to clear this up as far as, everyone's saying this is a fee. No, it's not a fee, it's a tax levy on those businesses. So we need to get the terminology correct. And probably one other question is, does the BID or the city of Salina have the ability to send invoices to all of the BID members? And can anyone answer the question here, how many BID members are there? And maybe Mr. Binkston could probably answer that one, and I hope, I'm sure he will. I'm bringing all this stuff up because I personally believe that we've got, we're getting ready to create three districts downtown. Are there any plans to dissolve the BID in the future? And by dissolving BID, we'll dissolve, dissolve the design review board. And if I'm wrong on that, I'd like to be corrected. Now, there's a lot of upset businessmen downtown have been paying this fee for a long time, and a lot haven't got anything for it. I've been in the BID for twenty-five, over twenty-five years. I have not got one thing, except they took a parking place out in front of my front yard that cost me probably, probably ten thousand dollars a year. They made it a handicap. No one asked me, they just did it. And so I just put up with it, didn't say anything about it because I didn't know a lot about what was going on at the time. And that's been, I think Mr. Schlechtel was there at that time, and maybe Mr. Binkston knows that. So there's a whole array of issues here that need to be corrected or answered, and.
Okay, well, how about we, how about we start clicking those off the best, the best that we can? So thanks for, for those questions, there's quite a few of them. And maybe if you could just highlight and answer the questions that actually pertain to this item directly. I mean, I, I don't think we have time to go into some of the other issues that deal with the state statutory requirements and so on. So anyways, okay.
Who submits the budget? Well, it's the board that's supposed to submit, they don't have to have an executive director, they do have an executive assistant, I know that assists. A twelve thousand dollar grant to SDI, the city has the full authority discretion by state law to provide funds to other entities, they don't have to be the BID, for purposes that benefit or, or purpose, and certainly bike racks or brace, brackets on our lights or whatever that might be does that. Is the BID the same as SDI? I think that was one, no, SDI is a nonprofit, the BID is an entity, as I already mentioned, that's enabled through action of the city because of state law. BID uses same financial method as TIF and STAR, it does not. TIF, tax increment financing and STAR bonds are based on an increased increment of property taxes and sales taxes that go into a pot for particular state uses. They're defined in a separate part of state law. The BID is service fees, that's a statutory term, it is correct. Whether it's interpreted as a fee is up to the, you know, it's in the eyes of the beholder, but that's a correct statutory term. Let's see, does the SDI and BID consist of the same members, I already answered that earlier. As far as the ordinance, you don't have to have, you don't, there's no statutory enabling issue here because you can choose how you want to appoint your members however you'd like to. So city, quite a long ways back, honored that to have continuity, it seems to work well, and that's what we do. What does SDI have to do with BID? Their, their core common purpose for the most part is the same, there's certain things that the BID can do and provide more flexibility to, that SDI probably wouldn't have funds to do, as long as the use of the BID funds is in accordance with state law, works fine. The service, I mentioned the service fee. Does BID and our city have the ability to send invoices? Yeah, if we want, and if we want them to do it, we could have the entity do it. But the BID isn't in itself, isn't an operational entity per se, that's why we do that. But we could, in essence, have SDI do that on our behalf if we wanted to, but we keep that here. How many members? I have no idea, that'll be a question, if Mr. Ruska wants to come by the offices someday, we can, the Finance Department can look that up very quickly and let him know the answer to that. Is there, are there any plans to dissolve the BID in the future? It's never been talked about, their role is a little bit different. Their role may change and evolve, and they've even talked as a board about how it may change and evolve, but I think there will be a, a role. If they are dissolved, would it dissolve the design review board? The answer is certainly it would, although you as a governing body have the authority to create still a review process and board to do that on your behalf. It doesn't have to be the design review board under the BID if you don't want it to be. I think that covered him.
Thanks, sir, thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mc.
We approve on first reading ordinance number fifteen, one oh eight one five, levying Salina Business Improvement District number one service fees for two thousand sixteen in accordance with KSA twelve seventeen ninety-one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading ordinance number fifteen dash one zero eight one five, levying Salina Business Improvement District number one service fees for two thousand sixteen in accordance with KSA twelve dash seventeen ninety-one. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item seven point two, adopt the two thousand sixteen business plan for the Salina Bicentennial Center.
Mr. Louthen, good afternoon.
Afternoon, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The item before you is, for your consideration, is the two thousand sixteen through eighteen business plan for the Bicentennial Center. Annually, as part of the management agreement, Global Spectrum will put together a, basically a three-year target operating margin or target forecast, and then review it with city staff, will negotiate and get to a number. So that's kind of how the process works, and this is approaching now nearly our fourth year of operation. However, this year was a bit unique in that all the construction that was going on and the different pieces like that, it made it a unique yet challenging environment for them to operate, but they did a really nice job. But I want to bring out our two thousand fifteen numbers. We were roughly forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars short of what the target operating margin would be with the variance. So we are over technically what it would be for fifteen, and that is projected because there's still a month left here to finish out and the books to finalize, but that's what we're projecting at this point. For two thousand sixteen through eighteen, they have established the following margins, five twenty-seven, nine ninety-one for sixteen, four ninety-six, three thirty-four for seventeen, and four eighty-one, one ten for eighteen. As part of that, Mr. Franz has included a fiscal note that kind of gives you a breakdown of how those funds are dispersed between guest tax and the general fund, so you can see kind of how those trend. Obviously, this has been an exceptional year for the guest tax, and it's been a very, very nice welcome addition to the, the funding sources on that side. It gives you an idea of how we're funding that. It also takes into account the performance incentives that we would pay Global Spectrum or what we would estimate based on how they would do as part of the management agreement. I have Mr. Wright out with me today, the general manager of the Bicentennial Center, should you have specific questions or want to talk further, and we can certainly bring him up for that. We have three items, or three options for you in front of you. Approve it, the two thousand sixteen as listed, reject the sixteen, and have us continue good faith negotiations, or go a different direction if you'd like to see us take it a different way. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Okay, questions for staff?
What does the negotiation process look like?
The short version is, they would propose their first one, get with me, I would go discuss it here, what they're basing it on, what some of the rationale is, visit with Mr. Gage, talk about where he wants to be, we would go back and forth, which we did several times. The numbers were where they started and where we were at, and we worked through those. We looked a lot at historical data with what had been performed at. I think one of the unique things we have in this atmosphere is that we haven't had a fully quote-unquote "functioning" new facility yet, where we haven't had some form of construction and/or partial years and different things like that. So I think the true answer will be down the road, when we have everything up and running, what is our capability or what's the capacity? And I think that, that question is yet to be answered.
Would the operating margin be here be similar to an operating margin in a similar-sized facility in another state?
I'll check to Mr. Gage or Ron if he would know.
When, when we started the process of selecting the service, the provider of the service, and we looked at Global Spectrum, there were, at the time, I think the same basic companies are out there, there were three primary companies that do this. And what we did is, is we had a lot of questions and to ask, and we took a tour, a team of us did, and looked at the facilities and asked their staffs those questions, and looked at their, their actual information, budget information and other information. And based on that, at that point in time, this would be pretty much in line with what we found. So it would be, I presume that those facilities, many of those have been operating for a while, so there's a point at which, unless there's some big change in how you operate your facility or some other change in your community or something, that you're going to get to a point in which you're not going to vary that much more. We still have some capacity, I think, after we finish our project, to see where we're going to get to. A lot of those other facilities did, and you would see them anywhere from probably the four fifty range up to the six hundred range for the well-run facilities. And once they weren't so well-run, would be a little bit higher than that.
Kind of along that same lines on that, you know, you mentioned a little bit, a capacity still there for. What effect would the recent substantial upgrades to the center have on this bottom line?
That's probably a better question for Mr. Wright, but I would, I would think that the, when you look at the improvements, and you're talking about the improvements that we've done, or the ones coming up, the final improvements?
Well, mainly the, well, the ones obviously that we've done so far, but mainly the ones coming up that will allow us to put on different events that we, we haven't been able to draw in the past.
Yeah, the, the primary project left is the, what we call the steel, kind of a steel rigging, steel structure in the arena. And what that would allow us to do is to carry the modern heavy shows, the shows with a lot of lights and sound and other things that have to hang off of the steel structure that we can't handle today. So it allows us to go with a different scale of show than we've ever been able to do before. So theoretically then, from that, depending on the numbers, we would be able to bring in bigger shows than we have, bigger shows of type that would hopefully draw in more people in attendance. Now, there's a little risk with, with that, but certainly we try to balance that as well with co-promotions and promotions, but gives us more potential.
How, how is that hope and potential reflected in the, in the business plan? Or is it, at this point, I mean, are we waiting to the point where we can put real, get a more realistic picture? Or are we projecting any of those potential upticks?
Yeah, well, clearly sixteen is a year in question because we know that we'll be about the middle of sixteen before we start some of that work. And then, and through the summertime is pretty slow anyway, but as we hit the fall, we get busy real fast, and that's when you could see some impact. But, so sixteen is a bit of a question. Seventeen and eighteen, somewhere in there is where you would expect to start to see the benefit of that. And how long it takes to get to what we've considered, in essence, sort of full capacity, plus or minus of our potential, I, I don't know. That would be a good question probably for, for Mr. Wright.
So it is somewhat reflected in these, in this plan?
I think it's intended to be. Yeah, I think quite honestly, with fifteen, with the disruption, you come out of fifteen, you get a little bit scared. And, and, and one of the issues with these. And, and one of the issues with these numbers, the point of these numbers is really twofold. One is simply to have a target, and it's also a response to the fact we have general obligation bonds on the facility, which, because they're tax exempt in that status, it minimizes our ability to, to basically pay for performance as far as dollars directly. It limits, there's a certain amount of money in how you do that. So, the intent of this is really, is that, is that if they can't hit the range two years in a row, then you, even if it's in the middle of a three-year or whatever year contract, you as a, or the city has the ability to simply unilaterally say, we don't want to do business with them any longer, and in essence legally breach the contract. Wouldn't be breach at that point, but legally separate from the contract if two years in a row. So, the point, this was structured purposely to create the incentive for that because we were limited on creating an incentive a different way because of the tax-exempt status of the bonds. So, that's really the purpose of this. And so, obviously, we could see, I think, some impact of where we ended up in this year, where we think we're going to end up, although that's not a bad number per se. It's just not, not what you'd expect if everything was done. And then, you can see 16, there's a little concern, and 17 and 18, you start to see that target come down some. So, I definitely think there's some, there's, there are assumptions about improvement in 17 and 18 when all the project pieces are finished and they're able to focus just on the events.
In the negotiation process perhaps, is there a time when you look at how aggressively Global Spectrum is looking at utilizing the full capacity of the Bi-Center? In terms of bringing in events that will generate more than eight or 900-seat events?
Certainly. I, I think one of the, the key things, and this may be a little bit off topic here, but like with the 15 piece, while we were open and while we were able to operate, one of the key pieces to keep in mind is when the construction was going on and with routing and trying to schedule and fit pieces in there that might work, that was a really, really difficult puzzle to do. We could operate with what we knew we had, but the new event piece was the struggle because with certain things that were going on, we didn't want to go in there and disrupt something or stop construction because that in turn costs us money. We wanted to find those where we could plug and play those and fit. Going forward, to answer your question with regards to capacity, they look at a wide variety of events and shows, from conferences to events to family, to larger entertainment, et cetera. I have certainly looked at a lot of their proposed or potential shows that they might bring in. They would be much larger than 900 or 1,000-seat ones. Part of the struggle though is, is finding the dates and the routing and the sequencing that works. And we were hamstrung, kind of tying it back to 15, a little bit with our flexibility to find and make some of those work simply because of the construction that was ongoing. But to answer your question, certainly, and Ron and his staff, their effort was fantastic at looking at a lot of stuff and trying to find stuff that, we all want to have big shows, and I'm definitely included in that because as a fan, if you will, of bringing, that's fun. But finding that balance between the big show and what that financial risk is where they feel comfortable co-promoting it and bringing it in, where we have some shared risk, that's that balance point. So, I think that, you know, I don't want that to get lost, if you will, that there is an art there. What's our risk tolerance to bring in a big show? And at the same time, where's the balance there to find the right ones that, that check both boxes?
Yeah, Commissioner, to add to that too, the, the way we're set up in the agreement that you, the commission, enable, you authorize me in a negotiation on a promotion to say yea or nay. So, ultimately, they'll make the recommend, Global will make the recommendation and their staff will, but it's up to us to say yes or no. And, and a good example of that is, is we just had a show that we were hoping to get, there's a guaranteed amount. There's always going to be, or typically going to be a guaranteed amount for the entertainer and so forth, and that number was up in the 400, over $400,000. And what I have to do is take about 5,000 seats divided by, times 100, which is $500,000, to know how, how close you're going to have to be with pretty expensive seats to fill that and what the risk might be. And so, we have the discretion to tell them, any show that comes in at whatever price, we might, we haven't done this, but we could approve it and, and take the risk that comes back to this bottom line off of them if we do that. But our job is to try to balance the risk with them and with their recommendation based on the information they know about how these shows have done, where they've been, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the kind of sales they've had. And so, in that particular case, we were, it's going to take basically a sellout to break even, and that means we're definitely not going to, wouldn't make any money, and if we didn't break even, we're obviously going the other direction. And so, it came back, the promoter wanted to be a little more aggressive than what we wanted to be with that. So, we said, mm, probably ought to back off of that particular one. But there are opportunities occasionally, depending on how aggressive we want to be, and as long as we have pretty good confidence that we think that that show can fill enough seats, we have the ability to bring in a pretty good show.
So, we have a very nice 1,200-seat facility in the Stiefel Theater. And so, I'm, I'm trying to find how that facility can exist and prosper alongside the Bi-Center, which has the capacity for much more in the way of seating.
Sure.
And I would like to, to see the, the Bi-Center and its events attract audiences that are in the 2,500, 3,500, 4,000 range. And not, without selling the store.
Sure.
In the process.
Yeah, we, we were totally in agreement with that.
I, I think one thing too, to note too, that like, for instance, this, this week, I think it was Friday, Saturday, they had two really, really large Christmas parties, if you will. And I know that one was, I don't know, 1,400-ish or so, give or take. So, they were all over the, the floor and everything else and utilizing both sides of the building. So, they are trying to find unique ways too to utilize the space that they have, to have some of those larger events, and I believe that was the first time that they had been at the facility. So, I mean, a really nice pickup there as well.
Yeah. And I think when we go back and look back when we operated the facility, we saw a, an annual deficit somewhere between, oh, about 800,000 on average and up as high as a million or a little over. So, we're still in a pretty good place here. And I do believe we get past 16, get past this year, of course, and then get past 16 when we're finishing up the projects, there is some potential. Whether it'll be 496, you know, as a target, 496,000 or 41, or even better, I don't know. But I think there's definitely potential, and the numbers go in the right direction, and that's what we like to see. So, I'd like to think, I'd really like to think at the highest level that, that number could be, I don't know, be nice to dip under 400,000, but that's me setting a pretty lofty goal.
I'd probably answer my follow-up question to Commissioner Hardy. Is it likely that over the next 10, 15 years, that annual subsidy number is going to be in the, between 400 and 500,000, even with bigger shows coming in?
I, I think that's a fair range to consider for the next, say, decade. I do believe though that after 16, that's when we will start to see we have full capacity. We're not limited by, by scheduling or different things like that. They have the ability to go out and really work the sponsorship piece. They have the go out, the ability to go out and work the log box piece, perhaps even have a, a title sponsor, if you will, or a, a building sponsor that could, you know, bring a nice addition to the facility. So, again, there's pieces to the, the puzzle out there that are still in play. We, we just need to take those deck of cards and have a full year and see, see what we can roll out there and do.
Yeah. If we could go, if we could realistically be between the 400 and 450,000 at some point, that would be, in my opinion, based on what we saw before, in the excellent, truly highly excellent range. If you dip below four, you're in the just superior, above all others range. It's kind of interesting too, as we, as we go around and, and time to time look at, and we did look before at conference centers and arenas and so forth, this is, this is pretty low. And these middles, mid-sized facilities, if you can get the business in and you can get folks to go to your shows, you have the ability to manage this better than some of the larger facilities. We just make assumptions when you see, you know, a concert like Garth Brooks at the interest, at the interest, a huge moneymaker, and I haven't looked at their numbers lately, but I know it was the time not too long ago, they were pretty worried about their deficit. And those big facilities have a lot larger staff, and a lot of times can have a larger deficit than what we have, and the scale kind of can work both ways. So, we're still pretty good, but I think there is some room to continue, but I, I think, Deion, both I, both of us agree that we need to get past the final piece of our construction and then start to focus in and see, see if we can hit where the full potential is.
Right.
And along the way, keep, to keep having really high expectations for the types of shows and be as aggressive as we think we reasonably can with tax dollars to do that.
Right. Just one quick, one last quick question, and that is in regard to the fiscal note and the table illustrating the, the funding sources. And I like the way that funding sources look on the general fund for, for the future. I think that really kind of helps us accomplish some of the goals that we have with that fund. And my question short-term though is for 2015, that $48,000 shortfall or the difference in the, in that amount, is that being, how is that, how is that different being funded? Is that being funded equally or proportionally or what between the guest tax and the general fund?
There's a certain amount of transient guest tax that's been assigned to the facility for operational purposes for decades, and what basically happens is, once it's used up, you're into the general fund piece. I believe, I'd need to look at Rod, but I believe that's how we used to look at it. I'm presuming that's how we're still looking at it.
That's correct. Essentially, the general fund picks up whatever's left over from the transient guest tax, so.
Is that by statute or is that by policy?
Just by design, by policy.
I mean, because I look at this.
It's about protecting the general fund when you don't need to spend it down.
Well, I mean, I look at this, and I don't want to make Sylvia mad at me here for bringing this up. But I mean, in a year where they're far exceeding, I mean, is there any, and it's, it's probably too late to do anything on this this year, but is there anything in there that says, if, if there's a preference to take the, the pressure off the general fund, is there any way to say, pull that, pull, pull the, pull the differences at least from a proportional or equal way for, so we don't put all the pressure on the general fund?
Well, okay, right, I mean, again, right now, the pressure's really on the transient guest tax first, and if we're successful, you'll see that, based on the numbers, the general fund won't have any pressure. But if you should, if you should look at it and say, we want to allocate the transient guest tax a different way, it's really a policy decision internally for the, going to the Bicentennial Center. And let's say that you want to take a certain amount of dollars in addition to what you do today and kick them over to the Visit Salina side over at the Chamber. They have an agreement. What we would do is we'd just update the, the agreement to reflect the dollars, the additional dollars that would need to go over there and what the purpose is. So, you have the tools to deal with this however you'd like to. You have full flexibility. As long as the transient guest tax dollars are always spent for the statutory purpose, you can do that however you want.
Okay. Proper time to talk about that is at the budget?
Well, the best time to talk about is, really is if they can eventually get the margin down so low that you're, you're actually not even, you don't even need all the guest tax dollars. You know you're sitting pretty good.
Right.
And/or if we continue to strengthen the health of the general fund and the fund balance and being able to meet your goals with that, that also provides you with flexibility. So, either of those two can give you something to talk about. But generally speaking, the budget's a good time to talk about it or in anticipation of the budget at any time.
I would point out that if the, the table assumes that the transient guest tax returns to previous levels, that this year was an aberration. We don't know that. If it continues at the current level, then instead of the guest tax contributing 460 next year, it would have available 588, and the general fund contribution in that case would probably be zero.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, because I add.
First, essentially.
I add those up, and they don't add up to the 597 is all. I mean, I look at that.
Yeah. Number one, what, I have included the incentive payment in 2015 that was actually attributable to 2014, which was $78,000. The other thing that comes into play is we run basically cash basis accounting, whereas the contractor, Global, runs on business accrual accounting, and so the numbers work a little bit differently.
Okay. Okay. I just have a problem with the Greek miracle system, so.
And we're protecting that.
I would say too, Visit Salina has been a fantastic partner with the Bicentennial Center in helping to attract the right events. Sylvia and her team have been instrumental in, again, playing a nice role and good complementary practices between the two groups there. So, we're very appreciative of her efforts and her team's efforts.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Is there any way to guess how the transient guest tax differed this year in terms of timing and?
Sylvia may have some thoughts. Well, she's coming up here. I know that we think of, we think of the visitor number as a big factor, and it definitely is, of course. That's what it's surrounded, but what it's a basis of it. But when you have construction in your community and you have contractors from outside the community, they're also going to fill up the hotels very consistently, and that's a big factor. I know we've had quite a bit of that, and maybe Sylvia can add to that and let us know her insights.
We're going to double time you a little bit. I, I don't want to share too much because, again, the information's proprietary, but we did have several new facilities that did, had significant contributions. There were some existing facilities that had reasonable growth, but as to why that occurred, why the stays were up, you know, we can, we can speculate. Maybe Sylvia knows the answer, but.
Okay.
We've talked about this off and on, and we really, you know, it's been difficult to put our fingers on.
Great.
Put your Guestamah hat on there.
I giggle because Rod and I have had this conversation ongoing all year. There are several things. There are a couple of pieces of, significant pieces of business that we had late 14 into 15 that will not necessarily repeat. And when I say significant, frankly, one is a military exercise training thing that doesn't happen all the time. We're kind of at, you know, at the mercy of the federal government as to when those things can happen and when they can't. That is one. Another piece of business actually stemmed from some work being done at McPherson, and it's exactly, as Commissioner Gage said, it's work crews here. We saw the same kind of a bump here that Hutchinson did. McPherson doesn't have a huge number of, of rooms and inventory, and so a lot of that crew was staying in those two communities for an extended period of time. Not so extended that they didn't pay transient guest tax, however. So, those two things are, were really significant. And then I would also say, good news across the board is that as we had some new product come on, and as we're going to have a little more new product coming on, those longer-term facilities, many of them have done a really good job at maintaining what we call rate integrity. They didn't necessarily sort of buckle and drop their rates in order to try to, you know, broaden their piece of the pie, so to speak. And so, I think that played out definitely in, in some of those. So, those are my speculations.
Okay.
Were you involved in the estimates for 16, 17, 18 for transient guest tax?
I am continually involved. We, we both use different mechanisms and confer back and forth, and it changes, quite frankly, on an ongoing basis. I track transient guest tax receipts on a monthly basis, and so I, I sometimes react quickly, and then I send an email to Rod and say, did you see this blip? And I'm not sure what that means. So, quite frankly, I'm still formulating what I honestly think the receipts are going to look like next year. But I, I do agree with Rod. I tend to try to be a little more conservative. I, I do not, at this point, anticipate they'll be as high as they were this past year. I really do think it was anomaly. So, somewhere in between is kind of where I'm at right now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any further questions for staff? No? Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Wright out? No? Okay, great. We'll move on to public comment, if there's any public comment at this time.
For Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. You brought up the issue about the transient guest tax, and Mr. Franz actually made a comment about they use cash basis accounting and not accrual accounting. I would like him to explain that to the public so they understand the difference. And, and how, and how does the transient guest tax affect the Bicentennial Center when the guest tax is put in the general fund? And one final comment is, the transient, and this is my opinion, the transient guest tax should be dissolved. We're all in a mode here of trying to create economic development, and we have an opportunity here to do it. To create economic development, why are we penalizing people coming to Salina? We should have a sign on the interstate that says, welcome to Salina, no transient guest tax. They would come here instead of going outside the area. Now, that is economic development, and we're penalizing one business type, which is hotels, to have to pay this tax. It's gone, it's only been going on since 1935, I believe. So, why do we just keep on going on and on and on? If we want some development here, we can drag all these people in on the interstate that says, no transient guest tax, welcome to Salina.
Okay. Now, do you have any? Now, do you have any questions regarding the adoption of the two thousand and sixteen business plan for the Bicentennial Center?
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, I'll pick several words out of this conversation. I haven't had an answer for any of them yet, so.
All right.
Maybe someone could address those, please.
Okay, thank you. I'll just say that, just just to your last comment about abolishing the transient guest tax, I I think that we can probably count on your support to contact your state legislators to tell them to vote no and don't consider a four percent state transient guest tax. So as far as abolishing our local transient guest tax, I would say that's not going to happen, but you can stop, help stop the state levying four percent on a state transient guest tax. So anyways, do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Muth, adoption of the two thousand and sixteen business plan for the Salina Bicentennial Center.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second to adopt the two thousand and sixteen business plan for the Salina Bicentennial Center. Is there any further discussion at this time on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, five-zero. Okay, there is no development business. We will have a request for an executive session. Is there any other business prior to that motion? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, have we, has the commission had any contact with our local state, I shouldn't say we as a commission, but you as mayor or the or the city manager on our behalf had any contact with our local state legislatures, legislature's slate tours regarding the?
In regard to that?
State.
Not formally?
Not not that item in particular, and I'd be honest with you, I haven't heard if they're going to actually have a bill on that or not. But what typically happens is, is we're getting close to the time, we see some bills prefiled, and here before too long, we'll see other bills filed, and then we'll get alerts from the League of Cities, the Kansas League of Municipalities. They're very good about tracking that and providing information to members, and then what I do is I'll kick that out to you, and for the most part, I can pretty much predict where you want to be on certain things, but otherwise, we may have a conversation here to be sure, but we'll, definitely if that comes up, we'll, we'll be on top of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, my comments were strictly my own on that. Position on the state transient guest tax, I did not imply to speak on behalf of the board, so. Okay. Do the honor, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at six?
Twenty.
Twenty. PM. Second.
PM.
Don't be optimistic.
Nice clarification. I have a motion in a second to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes and reconvene at six-twenty. Will there be any further business after this?
We do not anticipate any.
No other business after this, so, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Curry's five-zero, we're in executive session. Thank you.